Okay. Good morning. It is Wednesday, November-
Yes, el día de hoy es miércoles.
Oh, un momento. Okay, good morning. It is Wednesday, November 25th, the day before Thanksgiving, and please join our Board of Commissioners meeting today.
Estamos el día de hoy, el día antes de Exon de Gracias, por favor, reciban-
And we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do have two letters of citizen input at this moment. We do have, we did all receive a letter from Ragnar Hartman from Redmond regarding COVID and the statewide restrictions and commenting he is a veteran and he wants us to keep things as safe as possible. And we had another email from a Morgan Johnston. She said, are we going to be jailing citizens into Deschutes County? Lynn County had come out against it. And so I thank you, Morgan, for your letter. And I believe Sheriff Nelson will be, if he didn't already issue an edict, he will today. So just-
And I followed up, I think, with that specific email. What the sheriff had told me is they're going to be following the guidelines set out by the Oregon Sheriff's Association of focusing on education. So hopefully he'll do an edict. But that was what, I checked on that specific topic because I've been asked multiple times. But I said, I don't know what the police chiefs of Redmond and Bend will be doing.
I talked to the police in Redmond yesterday when I went to the county fairgrounds, and they said they would not be arresting anyone. So that was officers in the field. Any other comment?
So yeah, about 10:45, I'll be stepping out for a press conference with the mayors of Bend and Redmond. It'll go for about a half hour, starting at 11 o'clock, so that'll be 11:30. I'd probably be done. However, we want to work that into our schedule.
Okay, well, this is a very busy day and-
Don't we want to wish the citizens of Deschutes County a happy Thanksgiving?
Yes, we do.
And hope that they can do things that make it worthwhile and stay healthy.
Yes. And the good news is they're actually saying get exercise, get out, get some fresh air. It has warmed up, thank goodness. The warming shelter is open. It opened on Monday, and I believe it's been certified by the fire department for 60. So that's good news. And the fact that our weather has warmed up and the forecast said that it's going to stay a bit warmer. So that is excellent news for our community. And remember that you, yes, it's a different year, but we all have so much to be thankful for because we do live in the United States of America. And we are so fortunate. So thank you. We have a consent agenda?
Confirming that we've basically reviewed most of these items previously for the FTE changes, I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Further discussion, Commissioner DeBonne?
I vote yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Vote yes as well.
And the chair votes yes. So we will therefore go to our first action item, which is our COVID update. Nahad, welcome to our meeting this morning.
So one note, these same slides are going to be presented by Dr. Conway for this press conference. So this is kind of our pool of information, our current information as of today. It'll be presented here and discussed, and it'll also be, basically the same slides will be the beginning and the meat of the press conference also.
Okay, we, can we hear Nahad?
I'm texting him.
Okay. Should I send him a message?
I just did.
All right. Nahad, we're on time today.
So one note, kind of the technology of the day. We are broadcasting simultaneously on a Facebook Live stream. And I noticed recently I haven't logged in in Facebook on my county computer because that's kind of a personal Facebook page. But the requirement to be logged in to be able to view the content has come online recently. So it's a change in, must be Facebook's policy about just being able to see what's on Facebook. So that's just an interesting note for people to understand.
Okay, there he is. Okay, Nahad. There you are. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for joining us.
For the record, my name is Nahad Sadr Azodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. If you allow me, I will share my screen.
Nahad, at this moment, I would like to thank our public health department. I know they've worked seven days a week overtime. COVID has definitely gone a lot longer than anyone could have imagined. If you look back at my article I was reviewing from March 7th this year from the Wall Street Journal. And, you know, it definitely, even though today we have antibiotics, we have modern hospitals, we have intensive care units and instant communication, the virus doesn't really seem to care about all that. It's been a lot of work, and we want to thank your department immensely for putting their heart and soul into the work that they have done to keep our community safe.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, the department, and I appreciate, on behalf of the department, I appreciate your kind words. I also want to extend my appreciation on behalf of the department for your unanimous decision on Monday to support recruitment of six additional FTE. Of course, it'll take six to eight weeks for us to get them on board. Nevertheless, we are very grateful for your support in that regard. I do, similar to your sentiments, I would like to also acknowledge that these are definitely difficult times for our communities. And as predicted, we are going through a major surge at this point. It was predicted months ago that the fall would be probably a difficult phase for us. And this surge is definitely taking its toll on our communities and our health services staff, as you rightfully highlighted, particularly our investigation and contact tracers and a few of our leaders in the organization who have been working day and night to keep the community safe. So thank you for your acknowledgement earlier. This graph is cumulative number of COVID cases, which as of 11/24, which is yesterday, sits at 1,998. So two cases or two patients shy of 2,000, and 14 deaths since March 11. What we are observing from the data are spikes following some of the holidays, for instance, Fourth of July, but mostly since Labor Day holiday and Halloween that we had earlier.
Hey, Nahad, you make that statement each week, it seems like, and you always tie it back to a holiday. Is there really a way you've confirmed that it was those holidays that did it? Because I notice there's also, like, since Halloween, there's been a step up in testing. So, and then Labor Day. And then I noticed what you're calling the Halloween spike started immediately. The Labor Day spike started two weeks later or increased. So I just wonder, are we really sure that the holiday is the cause? Or, I mean, is it, it could also be coincidental, isn't that correct? Or?
What we see following holidays are a higher proportion of people who have traveled. We definitely see that in the data, and we do see a risk associated with traveling. We also have observed and heard and seen social gatherings related to some of these holidays as well. And when not wearing masks or physical distancing, definitely it increases the risk of-
So you've got statistics that show that there's more people coming from social gatherings without masks after Labor Day, after Halloween. And the travel, you're saying more people have traveled, meaning they've gone to other places and then come back with COVID? Is that your analysis? Or maybe people have come here and infected people? I guess I'm, we don't get the breakdown of what you really are finding that way, but I'm curious. Because it-
Yeah, we have presented data on travel-associated cases for sure in the past. And what we have seen is that when we interview, or we used, when we interviewed the patients and asked about their travel history, a higher proportion of them following these holidays have traveled. And then what we see after that, so what happens is that they get exposed, they import the virus in, and then we see basically an explosion in terms of a virus transmission within households. Right? So initially, they've been exposed, they bring it back, and then we see a shift towards household transmission and close contacts. We have seen those data, and we do believe that there is a strong relations between the social gatherings and travel associated during these holidays with increasing number of cases, Commissioner.
Because when you say we've seen that data, I don't think we've really seen that data. I mean, we've, there's been times when we talked about traveling early particularly, but we haven't seen that, you know, after a certain holiday, there was this many more from family relationships. So you're interpreting it for us, I guess, is how I feel.
No, I have presented those data. I'm happy to bring them back.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see that. Because, you know, we're deciding to cancel each holiday on this assumption. And I'd like to see that because just like the recent decision to close bars and restaurants, there's a lot of evidence that that hasn't been a proven cause of COVID, but it's an easy target. And we have another holiday, Christmas, coming up that we're, I'm sure there's people that are going to want to close that down somehow, too. So I just, I worry about that. So yeah, maybe we could see how you've concluded that with the actual numbers that we've used here locally that have concluded that. Thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, this slide shows the number of cases by week as of Saturday, 11/21. Of course, this week, the data are not shown here. We have, we have had 44 new cases reported from Sunday, which was reported, which were reported on Monday, and 44 new cases reported on Monday, which was reported on Tuesday. So we've had 88 additional cases. This past week, Commissioners, we had the highest weekly case count yet with 265 cases. The previous highest numbers were earlier in the month, during the week of 11/1 to 11/7 at 192. This slide shows cases broken down by age groups. The 20 to 29-year-olds continue to be the age group with the highest number of cases. We have discussed in the past that some of the factors related to acquiring and transmitting the virus within this age group is related to both behavioral and occupational. Occupational in that this age group tends to work in high exposure settings, and behavioral in terms of compliance with mask usage and physical distancing and hand hygiene. And of course, social gathering and indoor gatherings as well.
So Nahad, looking at that graph, did actually, the 20 to 49s were 52% of our cases, and now this graph shows that they've ticked up one, now they're at 53%.
Yes, 20 to 50-year-olds, Commissioner, we have seen a similar trend in that they are roughly around half the cases. You're correct. Having said that, as we look at some of the cases broken down again by age group since November 1st, we have had 732 cases since November 1st, which represents around 37% of our total cumulative cases. And in November, we are seeing around 25% of all new cases were in the ages of 20 to 29. So we are seeing an increase in that particular age group.
Nahad, I realize with, our numbers have significantly jumped up, but we, Deschutes County, are still sitting in ninth place per our number of positive cases for the state, even though our population is seventh. So there's some way, we're still in ninth, we haven't, we haven't dropped down. I realize our cases are jumping up, perhaps theirs are jumping up, you know, on the same stream. So anyway, yeah.
That's pretty consistent with what we've been for months.
Yeah, we've been, we've been in ninth place for months. And I know these numbers are, you know, gigantic. 60 last Friday was a huge number, but we're still in ninth. So it's not good.
So I think also, Nahad, what Commissioner Derr does is the same thing I do, is we take the total between 20 and 50 and divide it by the total number of cases each week. And it's what she's saying is we're going, we used to be below 50%, now it's more than 50%. It's gone up even from last week to this week. It's now 53, and it's, it'll be interesting if that continues to increase. It's kind of an interesting trend of that. Do you know how many people in the 20 to 50 age group have been hospitalized?
Yeah, we have those, we have those figures, Commissioner. The, I mean, ever hospitalized, we've had around roughly 90 ever hospitalized, and a lesser proportion of them are in that age group. But I can get you the exact data. And I'll talk more about the data actually as we move forward because as we are in this particular surge, the modalities of our response have changed quite a bit, as with the rest of the counties and the state. We're just simply unable to keep up with the contact tracing and investigation to the levels we were in the past. And at the same time, we're facing some challenges with technology and database and so on and so forth, coupled, of course, with just the overall fatigue. And sometimes what we are observing is lack of cooperation from some of the patients. So our data cannot continue to be as robust as they once were. And hopefully, once we come out of this surge, we're able to, again, go in and be able to collect comprehensive data that we were collecting in the past. I do want to bring your kind attention to this particular slide. I was mentioning that since November 1st, basically, the cases totaled around 37% of our cumulative cases. And specifically in the age group of 2029, we are seeing a bit of an increase, around 25% of the total cases in that, in this month versus the overall, which was around, hovering around, I think, 20%. This next slide, Commissioner, shows testing since early July. Testing has remained above 1,900 tests per week over the last eight weeks. And I think the increasing positive tests is not indicative of increased number of tests being done because we see more or less they're at the same, within the acceptable range. We don't see much of an anomaly in increase.
But Nahad, I have a question. I know the state is changing their metrics regarding positivity, and they're now actually counting each test, each negative test. Are our numbers reflective of that change? Apparently, before, it was only counted, if you were a person, you were only counted once. And now every test you have will be counted. So when are we going to see that on our numbers?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I'm actually going to share some information in that regard. Oregon Health Authority, or OHA, is definitely in the process of changing the way they measure percent positivity from the person of person, from percent of persons who test positive to the percent of total tests positive. And this will definitely cause our percent positivity throughout the state to decrease. The data above, the one that you see here, the data in this particular slide, still show the old method, which is based on persons tested. And that's because OHA has yet to update their testing data dashboard to the new methodology, and they anticipate doing that by mid-December. I think their system and their staff are also overwhelmed, and they're catching up. Having said that, the next slide, which is the school metrics, has transitioned to the new method where they are reflecting the percent of total tests positive.
Okay, before you go to the next slide, Nahad, so just for the layperson, what we're saying is, if I understand, is you're counted as a positive if you test positive once, but if you go back in in a week and you still test positive, you're, you're not counted again in the current metrics. It's just you or somebody that says a positive, you're positive till you're not versus what they're going to do if you get tested today and then you get tested in a week and you're positive both times. That would be two tests, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right, Commissioner. So usually, the guideline was around three months. So you had three months or 90 days where you wouldn't be double-counted. So if you tested several times because you're part of, let's say, a long-term care facility staff, and you're getting tested once a week or once a month, then you're right.
What about the people, somebody in our family was tested, and they do the rapid test, and then to confirm it, you do the long-term test. And say, this wasn't the case in this individual, they tested negative. But if they test positive in each of those, will those each be counted even though they're done at the same, you know, basically, maybe in the same day? The results may have come in in different days, but, because that's a common practice by some of the providers now, anyway. So-
Moving forward, my understanding is, Commissioner, that they will count the number of tests, yes.
So that person, if you get, you're found positive, then you get a double check, you're found positive again, that's going to count as two tests. So these, this is going to completely throw out this whole measuring system, really. I mean, it would, I mean, it could be as much off as, as much as half or, you know, 50% more tests, or, I mean, more than that, maybe, I don't know.
Well, I think this next slide reflects what you're sort of alluding to, which is what we see is that this is the two-week percent positivity. And as I mentioned, the school metric is accounting for this new methodology right now. And what we see is basically in the green lane here of less than 5%. So this, the last two weeks were cumulative of 4.5%. Because it's a combination of some of the two weeks, Commissioner. So this is obviously contrary to the previous slide, which still is using the old methodology. But as you were rightfully saying, that with the denominator expanding, the percent positivity will be reduced.
So in this one, the school metrics, we're still, we're still in the green?
In terms of the positivity rate, yes, Commissioner. But then unfortunately, when we go to the case rate per 100,000, what we see is a major surge and increase here. The last two weeks reflect around 235 cases.
So why, so is this, is this a chart that we produce or that OHA produces?
The state, the state produces this.
So why are they doing one chart, using the old, the current tests?
These two are coming from Oregon Department of Education, Commissioner. They're the last two. This, this particular one is from the state, and ODE is producing these. And we are trying to, I think the state is struggling with updating their dashboard and database at this point. We're really having major issues with technology, which is actually affecting our case investigation and contact tracing as well.
So, but my question is, so this one that's on the screen right now, you're saying is using the new method of tests, which is every test counts one, not, and the other, the next page is, is using the system we've been using, which is each individual counts one time?
Yes, Commissioner.
What they do, why wouldn't they do both of those? That seems odd. I mean, I don't know that it's relevant because we're not going to open anyway under the metrics, but-
Well, Sisters is open.
Yeah, you tell us that every time, and so is Cook County. But that said, I'm asking really about why is OED going to ODE, doing two different systems? And then why this whole thing is, unless you change the metrics, it's going to be even harder for school districts to open. Because when they both go to, each test is counted, both are going to show more. They're going to show more positivity, and they're going to show-
But I, I think, Commissioner Henderson, I understand your point in terms of the discrepancy. I agree with you. I think that's going to be resolved in the coming two weeks. I think the major hurdle for us is this case rate for 100,000. This is not anywhere near where we need to be in terms of allowing for reopening of schools, frankly. And I don't see this necessarily going down significantly in the coming weeks if we continue with the behaviors we are continuing with.
Yeah, no, I get, I get what you're saying. Interesting. Okay.
Thank you, Nahad.
Sure, thank you. In this slide, Commissioners, we are looking at St. Charles data. This is, these are, these are regional data, so include other counties as well. The numbers that we do see here do not just reflect Deschutes County admissions. It's admissions from other counties, even sometimes from other counties outside of our region, and could even be from other states. But majority of them are from the tri-county area, just to, just to be clear. We are seeing spikes as high as we have seen in the past in, between July and August, unfortunately, and even earlier in March. And ever hospitalized for Deschutes County sits at 89. And as of this morning, there were 13 or 14 admissions related to COVID in the St. Charles system with three in ICU.
Yes, according to, when I checked it, it said 14 today. It was 16 on Monday. Nine of those, you told me, were from Deschutes County, and three were in ICU, too. Yesterday's number dropped a bit, but now today we're back at 14. Do you know how many of those are from Deschutes County, Nahad?
I think around five or six. I have to double-check on that, Commissioner. But yeah, it's been vacillating between five to eight, sometimes nine, I saw as well. So we do have Deschutes residents, unfortunately, admitted. Hopefully, they're being taken care of, and hopefully, they'll be released without perhaps any multi-organ failures or any long-haul sort of residual impact on their well-being.
I noticed zero today, we're on ventilators, so.
We have those 30 ventilators.
So, yes.
What, do you know the total number of the, you said hospitalizations to date is 89 different individuals? Is that what you said?
These are ever hospitalized from Deschutes County.
Okay. And that's from Deschutes County itself?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
And Nahad, I noticed we don't have a hospitalization percentage. I know it was 1% for October. A week ago, it was 1.2% for Deschutes County. Do you know what it's at today, or could you get that information to us later, maybe?
It's hovering around the same as was shared last time, Commissioner, I think around 1% or so. As I mentioned earlier, Commissioner, we are in a bit of a bind right now in terms of the number of questions that we are asking and the contact tracing investigation and interviewing that we are doing. As we are in a surge modality, which means that we're at the sort of the maximum level right now in terms of our capacity in meeting the needs of the community and the, and the cases that we are seeing. Because we are in that modality, we have to basically focus on some of the minimum standards, the very high-risk public health, high-risk matters that have public health implications.
And 1%.
And as such, we definitely have had to scale back on the questions that we are able to ask and the data analysis that we are able to do as a result of that. I'm hoping that once we come out of this surge, then we will be able to go back to those comprehensive data and the great questions that you've been asking so we can start analyzing further and providing more information.
Well, I did leave my name- Well, I did leave my name this morning with Molly Wells Darling. If, you know, I know she was asking for a larger commitment to help with the department, but I said I was available if I could do something to help.
Oh, that's very kind of you.
Well, I'm, you know, I...
With what?
With tracing or calling or something. If they, you know, if there's something I could do to help, I realize that, you know, our job is seven days a week, but theirs has definitely been seven days a week. So if I can do something to help, I...
I've always got the sense that the department didn't want our help, because we originally were talking about bringing people in from other departments.
I know.
And that was shut down, so is that a possibility of people being able to help in some way? Because there might be other people, too, I mean...
Right.
Yeah, I think, yeah, thanks for raising this, and I can definitely say that we are in a situation where we could definitely use help and support, especially with particular skills around logistics and procurement and finance and so on. So we definitely welcome that. We have, we are communicating with our community partners in terms of any staff, skilled staff, like clinical skilled staff, like nurses, medical assistants, that they can assign to us in order to respond to this surge. Definitely county-wide support is welcomed, and I'm sure there'll be further conversations in the coming hours or day or so in that regard as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
Oh, no.
So, Nahad, this is Commissioner DeBoeck. The concept of a surge mode or in the surge state, I've heard that mentioned at St. Charles, and it was mentioned that they're not in that surge mode right now, which affects other operations, which they may be on the very edge of. But, so you're saying that in contact tracing at Deschutes County's health, we are in a surge mode? And, because my point is, when St. Charles says they're putting actions in place to manage the surge, that's kind of a different mode for them also.
You're right, that's an important distinction that you're raising, Commissioner DeBoeck. Certainly, my understanding of St. Charles' medical system is that they have surge plans in place, which they employ depending on where they are in terms of their capacity. And their capacity could be in terms of beds, it could be in terms of ventilators, it could be also in terms of staffing. Because it's not just how many beds and ventilators we have, we still have to have skilled people who are able to use those ventilators, for example. So certainly, I know that St. Charles' medical system has those plans in place and regularly reviews them and determines how they need to act as they move forward. In terms of local public health agencies all throughout Oregon with the increasing number of cases, basically, it comes down to local public health agency capacities in order to be able to continue to investigate and interview those cases and their contacts. And then there's also the element of, of course, having the technology to be able to insert that information into the databases and be able to then spit out more information and analysis and what have you. So we are, in Oregon, it appears that we are restrained on both fronts. In terms of staffing capacity, everyone's trying to hire basically the same people. Being able to get those people up to speed quickly, in that they require, you know, two to three weeks of training, adequate training. I'm not sure if this is, okay. Being able to get them up to speed very quickly, that takes a bit of time as well. Giving them access to the database, so that then when they do the interview, they're then able to enter the information into the database, which we call OPERA. And that system has just been really, really restrained in the last, or stressed in the last few days and week or so. It's tremendously slow at this point. And basically, we have to do some manual work during the day, and then after hours or before 8:00 AM, go into the system to enter the information. So there are a number of barriers and obstacles here that we're facing, and all of those lend themselves to going into a modality, which we call surge phase three, in this case, where we have to look at really, really most critical questions that we can ask high-risk groups in order to address the public health issues here and their well-being. And then same thing for the contacts. We need to also share that responsibility with the employers, for example, and other entities in order to address the contact tracing and monitoring of those folks. But in that mode, we definitely have to focus, be more focused on what's the most public health priority for us, for this community.
So, Nahad, I have a thought about this, that, so, when this first hit us in March and April, you know, we've talked about this as an emergency that's unusual compared to what we're used to, which is forest fires and snow events. And in those, a lot of people drop things, drop everything they're doing to work on that new emergency, whether it's snow or fire. And you see, you saw it this year with the forest fires in the river canyons west of us. So then we go through periods where there's no emergency, and so our staffing is able to handle it, et cetera. Or it's called an emergency, but it's not a surge emergency. I go back to what we originally suggested back in March and April, is why don't we do some outreach for people to come in as either volunteers or temporary employees to help with the things your department needs? I think we should have maybe been talking about this three or four weeks ago, but even now, it's relevant. That's what we'd do if this was a forest fire, or if you think it's that, if it's that serious, I mean, we're certainly changing lots of things and worrying, but it is, I would encourage the department to work with Tom and whoever to figure out a strategy to treat this like a surge emergency, if that's the need. You know, we've authorized hiring some new people, but as you said, that may take a while. But I bet there's many people in our community, that would, communities, that would love to give help. And I know when I suggested it before, because some other counties did bring people in as contact tracers and had them going fairly quickly, I think we were warned, well, it would take many weeks to learn how to do it. But then, we were then told that the people had learned fairly quickly, and it was maybe a week. So it seems like it's a problem that we could deal with, with the help of our community, if we put out a call to that. And I would think there's so many talented and capable people in our communities, this would be a very possible thing if we, I don't know if the other Commissioners agree with me of trying this approach, but Tom, I certainly like the idea, and it's, I'm in favor of it.
There was an email that went out this morning from the Central Oregon Health Council talking about the need for more help, and it did go to probably a wider group of the community.
But they have to be tied into our health department, because that's who needs the help, apparently. At least what we're talking about here.
There are, probably, a lot of retired medical people that do receive that email. So remember, originally, we had a lot of retired medical people that wanted to step in and help. And we were, and originally...
You're agreeing with what I'm saying, basically?
Yes, yes, Deschutes County did have it. Deschutes County had a medical system that was, I believe in 2017, was no longer carried forward because the person running it retired. Isn't that what happened?
And it's all about funding, too.
No, this, no, these were volunteers.
Yeah, but even managing that, the committee.
But I'm saying, none of this is gonna happen unless our health department, with Tom's help, develops a program or something to make it work in terms of the things we do. I mean, Central Oregon Health Council can get the interested parties together, but where are they gonna put them? And I'm saying, you know, that I would like our county health department to embrace that. And Tom, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, they were sending an email out from Janice, or so, who was asking for help. That was the email that was being forwarded.
Commissioner, in terms, as you kindly mentioned, Janice, she might be actually on Zoom right now. I don't know if you could kindly allow her for a minute or two of sharing some thoughts around this important, these important points that Commissioner Henderson's raising. Is that okay?
Oh, that'd be fine, yes. So she's, Janice, are you available?
Great, great.
I am available.
Like magic, she's right there.
Oh, Janice, we couldn't see you before.
Well, I just, I try to pay attention to these meetings, they're important. So thank you for inviting me in. Commissioners, you're absolutely right, you're thinking directly in line with our thinking. And you're correct, I sent an email to Donna Mills of Central Oregon Health Council this morning as part of a broader effort to solicit help for a number of things that we are doing incidentally out of health services. And we are in the process this week in response to, well, actually, beginning last week, and planning, in fact, to bring this to you, but you're ahead of us. We're in the process of reinvigorating our incident command response. So as you know, we had a full incident command established in March, April, and May. That demobilized as case counts were going down and things were fairly established. As the months and weeks have transpired since that date, what we are aware of is that we need to be back in full incident command again. That running it out of health services, even though we had an organized response, it just no longer was adequate to meet the need just from the landscape of the department. So as you know, being back in an incident command structure allows us to tap more broadly into community resources. And that's some of the activity you're seeing in email beginning now. So we are, I know that George is in conversation with Tom today about some of those steps. We are finalizing an org chart, and we'll be bringing that to the board imminently once we have all of those pieces in place. So excellent observations, and that's where we are today.
Do you have anything to say, Tom? I mean, they brought you up now, too.
Yeah, no, certainly, Commissioners, we have made use of volunteers in many county operations over the years. The biggest and most robust, as you know, is search and rescue. But in other departments, we've utilized volunteer help, so the precedent is certainly there. I would have to defer to, you know, health staff on which positions or which functions require, you know, a certain amount of training to be adequately staffed and for liability reasons also. But certainly, I'm stand-ready to help and assist the department in whatever way we can to make use of volunteers, folks that do have skills to do what they can, whether it's in direct COVID response or backfilling other functions within the department.
Well, is that what you're planning to talk with Dr. Conway about today? Or are you favorable to doing that, if he'd like you to, or?
Yeah, we can. George and I made arrangements following this meeting to talk about the ICS and what that means and how we can help, and we'll certainly add that to the conversation.
Great, I'm in favor of that.
Definitely in favor, and don't forget our Fair Association. Those are volunteers that run the fair. An amazing group of Deschutes County residents that have done historically a huge job for, what is it, over 100 years? I'm not sure if they were, I'm sure they weren't there 100 years ago, but, you know, there's some really amazing community members that put their heart and soul into that. And I know, when I saw the email today, I thought, oh, gosh, we definitely could pull volunteers back in.
Well, and yeah, I'd like to...
Oh, sorry.
Just real quick, so this is, I'd like to understand, you know, the OPERA database is slow in what people need for credentials and authorization and health background. So, you know, a little introduction to us as Commissioners and for the public to understand, okay, this is how you bring somebody in that wants to help, you know? Because there could be a lot of passion and possibly not the matching skills, or there's a lead time for the authority to have access to the database, or whatever it is. That'd be just good for us to understand, because then, you know, if there's a way to add more capacity in the short term through the incident command, I'd like to know the facts around some of that.
Yeah, Commissioner DeBoeck, I just really want to thank you for that point. There are, right now, we're in the phase in which we really need to be filling key leadership roles. And we have most filled, we're getting there. But if you don't have your key leadership roles filled, there isn't a lot of... That's what you need to make effective use of volunteers. And we would be happy, very happy, to come up with a strategy for plugging volunteers in in places where we can use them. I know there are people passionate and willing to help. Right now, just generally speaking, if there are folks who are already vetted, because that's a time consumption and cost element, if there are folks that are already vetted in terms of background checks and have some incident command training or previous experience, boy, we would happily, happily plug them in. And then we have to think about how to use volunteers that may not have had any experience with this sort of a response, because that's a different conversation.
Well, and, you know, I know from experience now, Red Cross has people that are team leaders, or they have their credentials for their specific job, and they show up and everybody just plugs in. You know, they put the org chart on the wall, and they know what to do, and they know how to do it. And then we see that also at our fire incidents. You know, people come in and say, okay, it's a, you know, type one, type two, or type three, we've got this kind of incident command, here's the command tent, and then here's the field of firefighters, and they're all in subteams. So we know how to do this, so if we need to take it to the next level, let's go.
Thank you.
Hey, Janice, thanks for your intervention, it's very helpful. And excellent points raised also around, for example, you mentioned OPERA and volunteers. Believe me, I have offered my volunteer services to our investigators and contact tracers, and I couldn't pass their rigorous screening process. So clearly, they have high standards, and it's right, it's the right thing to do, because we want to protect the community, not just in terms of health and safety, but also their privacy and confidentiality. So all humor aside, I think your points are really valid, and we definitely, as Janice rightfully said, do rely on the community and community support, and those especially with specific skill sets and credentials to join this effort. So thank you for that.
And then, I mean, I just can't help think, you know, if there's a response, the database and the user interface and the flow of data, I'd love to talk to that, you know, whoever's kind of the lead person at Deschutes County on that to understand a little bit more, be able to advocate, and, you know, just help move it forward. So, you know, I know that a Commissioner, you know, sitting side by side with somebody could slow that operation down, but it's just a little analysis also.
Absolutely, we can make that happen, Commissioner. I've done shadowing, not in recent days, but when the cases were not so high. I did some shadowing as well, it was really humbling to watch our excellent team members do such a great job in terms of connecting with patients and being able to retrieve information that is often, you know, sensitive information from them. So certainly, we can try to arrange for that, so that you have that opportunity as well.
And I'd be available, you know, next few days through the weekend. If people are really working hard on this, it's time to, you know, just to, if there's a shadow opportunity, I'm available anytime.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So this next slide, I'm hopefully gonna wrap this up soon. This next slide, Commissioner, according to CDC, tomorrow's Thanksgiving celebration could likely add fuel to an already unprecedented and to some extent, uncontrolled COVID-19 situation. So if any of our community members are considering to travel for Thanksgiving, I think here are some important questions that they can ask themselves and their loved ones beforehand. And maybe they can, these questions can help them decide what is best for them and their family members. So for example, are you, as a community member, are you or someone in your household or someone you will be visiting at an increased risk of getting very sick from COVID-19? So increased risk really in terms of age, in terms of pre-existing conditions, for example. Are cases high or increasing in your community or your destination? Because that would obviously put us at higher risk of exposure and transmission afterwards. Are hospitals in your community or your destination overwhelmed with patients who have COVID-19? And that speaks obviously to the capacity of the medical system in being able to treat and care for anyone who's facing severity in terms of this disease. Does your home or destination have requirements or restrictions for travelers? I know that there is a governor's advisory in terms of two-week quarantine, for example. For Oregon and other places, there might be similar ones, so it's good to keep that in mind. During the 14 days before your travel, have you or those you are visiting had close contact with people they don't live with? That's also important, in that that's the incubation period, and we might be... That's also important in that that's the incubation period, and we might be putting other people at risk. Your plans include traveling by bus, train, or air, which might make staying six feet apart difficult. And I do want to acknowledge that, of course, that what we've seen with the airlines is that they've gone above and beyond in making air travel safer. Nevertheless, it's good to keep in mind the mode of travel, the mode of transportation as it might increase our risk exposure. And are you traveling with people who don't live with you? That's another consideration. If we answer yes to any of these, I think it makes sense to consider our plans again and other options in getting together with our family members. I do want to say that certainly in the absence of vaccines, we do see some common sense interventions really pay dividends, such as physical distancing, washing hands, and in particular, masks, wearing masks does help. And I do want to, again, acknowledge our commissioners, who from day one actually were role modeling mask usage and physical distancing for the community, and we're grateful for that. This is a study that just came out and showed that in Kansas, they implemented a mask mandate in July. It was, it was voluntary, some counties decided to opt out. And what they saw from the data was that the counties that did institute a mask mandate, they saw a reduction in new cases in terms of rates per 100,000. And in counties without mask mandate, they did see an increase. So masks certainly are not foolproof. Masks alone are not going to necessarily protect us, but definitely they help in reducing perhaps the amount of virus that we ingest and giving our bodies a chance to fight the virus, in fact, and protecting others from some of the asymptomatic transition that happens and ourselves. So I just wanted to share that with our, with our community. These are not, as I wrap up, these are not humorous times at all. I do try to find some silver lining in everything and try to find something that puts a smile on my face or my colleague's face. I did see this little image, it's from a country in South Asia, Bangladesh, and I thought it was a good kind of thing to share and, and maybe it's catchy phrase, which says, avoid touching men, you got to remember to avoid touching men, so that's our mouth, eyes, and nose, instead, follow women. Wash our hands, obey physical distancing, mask up, exercise and eat well, and no unnecessary crowding. Again, I just want to say that these are not light times in our lives. We are going through some dark moments, and as Janice has often said, during these times is when we need to dig deeper and find the energy to get us through these times, difficult times. So with that, I conclude this presentation. Thank you, commissioners, again, for inviting us, for giving us an opportunity to share some of these data and for your usual support and consistent messaging with our communities.
No, thank you, Nahad, and thank you to your department, and appreciate all that you do, and I know, the good news is, the therapeutics have been, are being shipped out. I believe right now, the Regeneron is going out, the therapeutic that has been fairly successful, and then also the vaccines are going to be going out to the most vulnerable and hopefully to the hospital workers, you know, to help keep them safer in the position. And please, if you haven't gotten a flu shot, please do so.
Thank you.
I got my double dose, and I'm still fine, so, I think I'm fine. Anyway, so yeah, get your flu shot if you haven't. I know, I think the percentage has gone up, though, hasn't it? Is there any good, is there a good number for the state of Oregon as far as the flu vaccinations go?
I think we're still compiling the numbers, Commissioner, but I appreciate you mentioning that. I should have also mentioned it earlier, that it's not too late to get the flu vaccine. We, it certainly can help with this potential twendemic that we might be facing. So certainly, I think, and it would definitely, getting the vaccine can help reduce the burden on an already stressed, you know, healthcare system. So certainly, I'm grateful that you raised this point. Definitely, the virus is circulating in central Oregon. We are seeing positive tests with relations to flu. There are good effective vaccines available, and most people over six months, with some caveats, of course, can get those vaccines.
And I actually did a routine care procedure on Sunday and went to one of the local clinics, medical facility, and it was amazing. They said they had been open six, seven days a week for two years, but they just added this procedure recently, because I thought, well, is this because of COVID? But no, they've actually been working seven days a week for a while, and it was really quite lovely. There was no waiting, you walk in, you're, you know, you're into the system, you're taken back, you're, you know, you're in and out and within 25 minutes. It was unbelievable, so professional, and the people were so kind. So please, I want to thank our healthcare workers. I know they're all out there and, you know, they're doing amazing work. So I do appreciate you from the bottom of my heart. So please, stay safe and follow all those guidelines. And yes, small turkeys are in this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners Henderson, DeBon, and there, appreciate the invitation.
Okay, thanks, Nahad. Okay, so we now have our funding update.
So was there a document put out for that? It was in my inbox this morning, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it was, it was in your inbox.
Maybe, Tom, maybe we can just get Megan or, well, can we just, sorry, I didn't see it, I must have walked. You want me to text Megan or?
I will.
They'll bring it down, right? Thanks, I just hadn't seen it.
This is Samantha, Megan's going to bring it down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here, you can have yours back.
They can just give it to me.
Sure.
Okay, so let's see, Greg. There you are. Good morning, Greg.
Good morning, Commissioners. Share a screen here with you. This is the report, this is the update report that I left you in your boxes last night, so hopefully you can see that okay on the screen. For the record-
We're not seeing anything on the screen, but you-
Yeah, it's not on the screen, Greg.
We're seeing you.
Okay. How about that?
There we go.
Okay. All righty. For the record, Greg Mon, County Treasurer and CFO, I just want to give you a quick update on the CARES Relief Fund allocation costs. So just to frame it up quickly, for those who may be hearing this for the first time, back in the spring, we were allocated $6.4 million in Coronavirus Relief Fund dollars through the CARES Act, and you can see that number up here on the screen, $6,405,575. We spent a portion of that through June 30th, and in the summertime, we reviewed the balance that was left that had not been allocated as of June 30th. We reviewed that with the commissioners, and at that point, we had $4.6 million, $4,614,721 to allocate. We've gone through several allocation exercises, and as of right now, about $43,000 is left to be allocated, and I'll touch on that here real quickly. Wanted to give you a couple of updates. On Friday, we submitted a reimbursement for costs incurred through October 31st of $1,672,006.7. You can see that on the screen here, hopefully, or on your document right there. So in year-to-date, so far, total costs claimed against the original $6.4 million is a little over $5 million, $5,33,394. What we have left remaining that we have not claimed yet is this $1,372,181. Of that amount, approximately half, so approximately $700,000, has been reported from our community partners that they, that these dollars have been committed. And what that means is they've either contracted those dollars out or have spent them in the month of November, but they are fully committed. They just don't show up on our side yet because they haven't claimed reimbursement yet. So boiling this all down, out of the original $6.4 million, just a ballpark estimate, is we have about $700,000 left to spend, has not been committed yet, that we don't know that's been committed yet, between November 1st and December 30th. The rest of-
What do you mean by you don't know if it's been committed? $700,000?
Well-
I thought it was all committed, it was just they were having trouble committing it, is it the next step?
Right, so that's, that's a good question, I should clarify that a little bit. So, for example, we had several contracts with different providers out in the community, Neighbor Impact is a good one, we've got several with them. So they've reported to me on, on some of their contracts, although they hadn't, we haven't seen, we haven't paid them, we haven't reimbursed them fully yet, they've reported to me that all of those dollars have been committed. Those are dollars we know will be spent either, well, sometime between October 31st and the end of the year. Dollars that we believe will be spent, but we haven't had a report back from a community partner, for example, are costs associated with our EOC or with our leave. We don't exactly know how much those dollars are going to be right now, we don't know how much they'll be committed, so we don't have, we can't report back and say, we've been told that we will spend the other $700,000 for sure. So we're still on a good track to have all of this spent by the end of the year, end of the calendar year, and the folks out in the community have done a great job of keeping us updated on where their status is, and we'll continue to do that as we move forward. Again, the goal is to make sure we've deployed all of these dollars as directed by the Board by that December 30th deadline.
So Greg, I noticed Mosaic is now saying that they're going to be able to spend $110,000 for the testing, and that means we're going to get 40, the 40,000 is coming back from that original contract? Is that not correct?
Yes, correct. And if you look, I'm not sure, page three of the paper report or up on the screen, you'll notice here, there's an update in the notes.
Right, in red.
Yep, $40,000. So that $40,000 essentially drops to the bottom to be reallocated elsewhere.
Right, but then I'd actually forward something for Jericho Road, we're asking for help purchasing showers, mobile unit showers, and they weren't asking for the whole amount, but they have put it out there, and they have heard back from several groups, but I noticed it's not listed here as pending requests.
Yep, correct. So I had a conversation with Neighbor Impact about this, and Scott Cooper is in conversation with the state on three projects, this mobile shower truck is one of them, and he's seeking funds from the state, and he said he would know by November 30th. So by next report, by next week, he will know if that can be funded through-
Through the state?
Through them.
Okay, good, 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 because I, I thought it sounded like a worthwhile project.
Yes, yes, so I'll come back with that then, once we, I'll let you know what he finds out. So the short story with the CARES funds is we're on track. We're staying right on top of this to the extent possible to make sure that we have no loose ends by the end of the year, and we have $43,462 that has not been, that is unallocated right now, that is available, be allocated at your discretion. One other point I would also add is we received an additional request from the Development Department. That is listed both down here in the bottom of pending requests, $80,777 for VPN-enabled laptops or remote workforce, and also on the paper document that I left you last night, which is now also up on your screen, is the request from Nick LeLac and Sherry Pinner for those, with more detail on what specifically those are. So I'd leave you, if you have any questions, we can talk about that, or if you would like to allocate any of these funds, we could move ahead with that as well.
So you're saying, really, though, that's just the, we're going to, this last 43, we don't have committed, and there may be some of the other that doesn't get spent, so we, we might have $100,000 or something possibly, I guess, if we didn't do anything today. I kind of would be in favor of waiting to see what the, our business fund, you know, we've got the $2.3 million, that might be somewhere I'd be interested in, depending on the amount of requests we get, of putting the money into there for all the businesses that have been shut down in this latest freeze. So that would be my position for today, not doing anything else and waiting to see.
Yes, the $2.23 million that we're, that we're getting, definitely. We should know that next, what, next Monday? Is that on our agenda for Monday? They're working on it.
Commissioner, yeah, it's first, and in fact, since you and I talked this morning, we now have a draft proposal that we'll package up for you and give to you today so that you can-
Good, so we can study it.
Well, I'd like to talk about it today, if it's, if you've done with it, if maybe after lunch or something, if you, at least initial thoughts, because I've done some reaching out to businesses that I know are shutting down and are impacted and talked about, you know, how would we do this? Maybe we could, if we have any input, give it today, so then, then try to finish it on Monday, if that's, sounds reasonable. Do you, are you good with that?
Of course, yes. Definitely, we-
Because a lot of people are immediately starting to, well, they're impacted right now, really.
I just want to say on the record, just so everyone is aware, even though Multnomah County got the $100 million directly from the federal government, they have been ranked number one by the governor again, and they are receiving $7.6 million, as with Washington County's getting $5.77 million.
They had got roughly $100 million-
Two, yes, yeah.
Two also, yeah.
Yeah, this is unbelievable, Multnomah County received 51% of the cultural arts funding, and they also had school districts within their county that received funding. And the rest of us, I consider, are the ugly stepchildren of Oregon, the other 34 counties. So, yeah, when I saw that they were on the top of the list, I honestly, I could not believe it. They got $100,000, $100 million, and if they got $100 million, then that means Deschutes County should have gotten $25 million. And what did we get? We got $6.4 million. So, yeah, we, you know, we should be getting more than $2.234. It's just, it's totally-
Something to remember in future elections and-
Yeah, definitely.
Voting, regarding decisions.
Yeah, we are definitely the ugly stepchildren of the state. So, I mean, all 34 counties. It's not just, it's not just us, but it's really, it's really unbelievably unfortunate, especially with our growth, the fact that we are the fastest-growing county in the state, we have so much tourism business, and our restaurants are, all these have been, you know, they've spent a lot of money trying to follow COVID and really do a great job, and now they've been shut down again. So, anyway, elections have consequences, as we all know.
So, so is that good, Greg, that we wait maybe till next week to see about further redistribution or?
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. We'll know more next week, definitely.
And thank you for getting the number from Mosaic, because I know that Dr. Young has been out in the community, testing, testing, and testing, heard from some other doctors in the community. Last, this last week, they did more testing than they had ever done. Yes, we're, you know, we are doing more testing, you know, I bet it may even go up, what do you think, to 3,000 last week, when they get the final numbers in? It's at 2,500 now, so, yes, please, stay safe, and if you are vulnerable, please take really good care of yourself. And if you are asymptomatic, please stay away from people that are vulnerable. Thanks, Greg. So should we pop onto the finance report at this time?
Yeah, yep. Let me get my screen up here. Okay, so next up on the agenda is the monthly financial report, and this is as of October 31st, 2020, for fiscal year 2020. And hopefully, is the screen okay? Can you see that? The limited ability that, the screen showing now?
It is.
Okay, all right. So the, our investment portfolio, which includes all of our investments, our cash balances, at the end of October was $229 million, and I'm referencing the upper left portion of the graphic on page one of the report, 229, 170, 746. All of those balances have policies attached to them, and all were within policy with the exception of the LGIP, that's the, that's our local government investment pool account. It acts as somewhat of a money market account, it's where we place funds that are needed on a short-term basis. That pool actually has a limit, it's 51,177, so as you can see, we're slightly over that limit. This is not uncommon during tax season, when we're, we've taken a significant influx of tax revenue, and we're distributing those to our taxing districts, it ends up, the portion that we keep during tax collections is about $60 million, so those dollars need to be reinvested out in some of these other areas, but that just takes a little bit of time, and state law allows us, gives us some grace period to do that. So we're working on that, that's just a quick update there. If you look over here at the investment income, we brought in $187,000, 165 for October. As you can see, that's about $150,000 less than what we brought in last October, and I don't need to collaborate anymore on that, because we all know what's going on with interest rates, or what's going on-
Greg, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for your leadership, and changing our fee ratio to a flat fee, I believe that has saved the county significant funds, so I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think you did that.
I think it's a more reasonable fee structure. Well, actually, it was something that our internal auditor, David Givens, brought up.
Oh, good, well, thank you to Dave Givens then, and happy Thanksgiving to him.
Yep, exactly. So, interest earnings are down both month, compared to last year, I should say, and then year-to-date, we're at about, our interest earnings are about two-thirds of last year. And if you drop down here to yield percentages, you can see that our LGIP, I mentioned this last month, but the pool where we keep most of our liquid cash, rate of return, or the interest rate, went from 1% down to 75 3/4 of percent, 75 basis points. On average, the overall pool is earning 1.19% versus last month at 1.52. A key, I don't mention this often, but something that's kind of key to look at is our benchmarks, and so, the 24-month treasury, this is our most secure investment option, is our treasuries, and just for a benchmark, the two-year treasury is the yield, or the gilt to maturity on those, as of this writing, was 17 basis points. The LGIP rate is 75 basis points, so you can see it's considerably more, and then the 36-month treasury is 21 basis points. So, I'll bring up something here in a little bit, but I wanted to note that, so you could reference that. And that's about it for that page, you will see this investment activity next, in the next report, that these purchases in the month, this will continue to go up as we work to reinvest, or to invest the surplus reserved, or dollars that the county brings in in taxes. And local investment returns, not a lot to say here, other than it's sort of status quo in terms of returns, things have kind of bottomed out, I expect this to trend to continue for a while. Our portfolio balance is also following historic trends, this is a three-year lookback. One area I do want to share with you, and this is a relatively new graph, is, this is our maturity ladder, this is when our investments are, they're redeemed and turned back into cash, so what we ideally try to do is to spread this out evenly, this is a five-year period, I know there's no dates on here, but this is over five years, and we try to spread this out evenly, so that we don't have a whole bunch maturing in any one area. The blue bars, this is what I showed you last month, that was at the end of September, and this is where we're sitting now, in terms of maturities, at the end of October, and you can see, as I mentioned before, that the focus is really in trying to fill in this area out in 2023 and 2024. Right, on to the list, our portfolio details, couple of key points here, the gray, as I've mentioned before, just as a point of reference, we were investing last year, we would be able to buy instruments, you know, in the 1.8% yield to maturity, 1.6% yield to maturity, 2%, and now, here's a, sort of a bunch of our investments that we purchased this month, or in October, I should say, and you can see we're somewhere in the high 50s to low 60s basis points, so, 0.65% of a percent, so 65 basis points, so considerably lower, but these are also three times more than those, or four times more than the securities, US, the two-year security, and the long-term treasury notes that I showed you on the previous page. So it's all about perspective, so all of a sudden, you know, now, 60 basis point return is looking pretty good, whereas last year, it wasn't even being considered. All right, rolling on to budget details, this is just the summary dashboard from general fund, what I want to point out here is, if you look at this little infographic on monthly expenditures and monthly revenue, you'll see that the current year actuals, in both cases, are significantly higher than last year's, and that, in the expenditure side, and for a fair amount of the revenue side, has to do with CARES Act revenue coming in, and CARES Act expenses going out. Those are dollars that we did not budget, so you're going to see an increase over budget. The other component here, on, particularly on the revenue side, is the way the calendar fell, that we've received more tax, property tax revenue in the month of October than we did last year, so it's sticking out a little bit in terms of revenue. On the position report, our total positions, if you sum the total of these two numbers at the bottom, the 1,039, 90, and 51, 21, we're sitting at 1,091.11 FTE. This is up one FTE from the last several months, and that was a, the net of some decreases and some increases that the board approved during the month. So the sheriff added one position that the board approved, there were two positions that were limited duration during the month, that in health services, and I know they're still working on these, that dropped off, so that was a minus two, and then, if you recall, the addition of two FTE, or the reinstatement of two FTE in community development for the assistant and social planners. Overall, the vacancy rate, the unfilled rate, is on a downward path, at 4.69%. Okay, I am going to try to highlight the key points here, that I think are important to know, as you go through the budget details. First off, just county-wide, looking at our revenue, we have $78 million that we brought in, that's revenue that's come in year-to-date, this is 31% of budget, this is, just for comparative purposes, it was 19% last year. So, key differences are really in a few funds, all of the property tax funds, 911, sheriff, the general fund, those revenues are all up in those funds, simply because, as I mentioned earlier, property tax revenue started, came in earlier this year than it did last year. The other fund of significance, and you'll be aware of this as well, is our TRT funds, we budgeted the 6.9 million in revenue in TRT low, because we weren't sure with COVID, but it turns out, at least through the summer months, we have been almost back on track with prior year revenue resources in those funds. So those are the major revenue changes. On the expense side, overall, we're at 25% of budget, last year at this time, we were at 27% of budget.
Well, just to note, Greg, that TRT is on a huge, it's going to be an increase over last year, if it keeps up this, this way, because we're only, this is only three months, right, or I guess it's, it'd be June, July, August, and September, so it's all the summer months, but 78%. I know, but it's always cash, so it's really the June money, so the first month is June, and then, I mean, they report it in July, isn't that right?
Yes, yeah, yep.
Though it does come in that whole summer. But 78% what we budgeted already, after four months of summer.
You're also correct, we're, at least year-to-date, we're slightly ahead of where we were last year, and we'll see where that carries forward in the coming months.
Well, the projection, it says eight point, almost 8.4 million, so, which is more than the budget for the prior year, so if it-
That's true.
It's, yes.
So, and just overall, fund balance, we're up $10 million over last month, and that's largely due to the revenue components that I just mentioned. Okay, on to the general fund, on page, back at page 95, a couple things I want to bring up there. Again, here is, we were, this 20, we're at 25% of our revenue collected year-to-date, last year at the same time it was 11%, and that increase, percentage increase compared to budget, is due almost entirely to, well, it's due to CARES funding, reimbursements that we're receiving, and property tax collections. So those, those are noted out here in these notes here. And on the expense side, we're also up a little bit, because those CARES funds, when they come in, we turn around and send, or we actually send them out, and then we get them back in, but there's a corresponding expense line right here of this 2.265 million. You can see that it's considerably over our budget amount, and that's driving our percent of budget at 40%, whereas we would expect it to be around 33%.
I'm sorry, where are you, but, or where are you including the CARES funding?
If you look at page 95, and if you look under requirements, the bottom line under the requirements is non-departmental.
Okay, yeah.
There's a budget of 1,486, and we've spent 2,265, so that is, those expenses were, those expenses are 152% of budget right there, and those are CARES-related expenses. And these, these are dollars that we'll come back to you probably in the January, February timeframe, and request a supplemental appropriation to cover that. Okay, on to the next page, Fund 030, no change, I don't have any comments on that page. On to 160, 170, the TRT report, no change to report there, then you'll see the, you know, we're 78%, we're projecting an $8.4 million revenue in that fund, based on a $6.9 million budget, so, expect, well, that'll be part of the budget adjustment, we'll come back and ask for as well. Fund 220, the next page, nothing to report there, no significant change from last month, or anything to compare it to a prior year, they seem to be right on track. Sheriff, Fund 255, and as I mentioned earlier, you'll notice up here, property tax revenue, I believe last year this was zero for them, so, property tax revenue has come in 14%, which is pushing their revenue as a percent of budget up to 17%. Last year, that number was 7%. And the sheriff's expenses are right on track, they're at 33% of budget.
They couldn't be much closer, could they?
Yeah, I know, I mean, maybe we should run these decimal points out and see how close they actually get. Okay, 274, this is a conglomerate of both our admin, public health, and behavioral health, so I'm going to just go past that, because there's no significant changes from last month.
So, again, I want to just note, for anybody that's watching this, that our, because this was discussed a lot in the most recent campaign, that we aren't spending enough on health in the county, we're spending 50 million is our expected, projected amount of requirements this year, whereas the year before it was 42 million, so that's $8 million more, and then if we go over to behavioral health, it was criticized for not having as much money in the transfers from the general fund, it's actually gone up 300,000, it's on page 102, and the transfers in from OHP mental health have gone up from, what is it, 1 million to 2.3 million, so, big increases, and both of those are built into what we're doing right now, good or bad, or whatever, but that's just a, it seemed like the perception was that, that we weren't doing enough, and, or we should do more, and we are, have been doing more, if people want that, I just want to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. So behavioral health, which is on page 102, just discussing that, there. There, revenue projections for the year, you can see at 32 million, this is up $2 million from, and a variety of changes here, I won't go into any of it, but the point I just wanted to make is, just to note, is that the revenue has increased, there's been several staff reports that have come through, I know that have alluded to this, and we've been working with them closely, I'm making sure that we get their budget changes in, and before the board, in a timely fashion. On the expense side, they're at 27% of budget, this is consistent with last year, and no change really in their projected expenses, looking toward the end of this year.
Greg, I just want to point out, actual of 2020, I'm sure there's some footnotes here that need to add to it, but it was 24.5 million, and the projection for this year is 32.5 million, so that's an $8 million increase of resources.
Yes.
It's significant.
Yeah, it's a, it's a 33% increase or something-
Yes.
In one year.
Okay. All right, on to public health, this is page 104, and really, the story is similar here, this year we've received 53% of our originally, original budgeted revenue, this number last year was 35%. In addition, they're projecting another $2.4 million by year-end, so considerably more revenue flowing into public health, as well as beyond the behavioral side. And as consistent, and as is consistent with behavioral health, their expense side is 31% of budget, that's both consistent with the last year's, last year's expenditures through the same period of time, and also through the percent of our year completed. Community development, 295, those folks over there are doing a good job with their budget, you can see they're just slightly ahead of, 34% of their budget they've received in revenue, and 31% of their budget in expenses, so they're managing that real tightly. The road fund, one change here, you'll notice that they've received 40% of their revenue in year-to-date, now this is, last year this number was about 36%, but the reason why they've received more revenue as a percent of budget is this first line at the top, which is their gas tax, again, we had, we had budgeted that lower, due to what we believed at the time was going to be significant reduction in driving, and therefore gasoline purchase, we did see that for a while, but it, it sprung back much faster than we expected, so we'll continue to expect to see this variance of 592,000 increases, or at least stay stable as long as this projection continues, and their revenue will be, continue to be above their budgeted amount projection. So they're about half a million dollars more- their budgeted amount projection. So they're about half a million dollars more in revenue for the year than they originally budgeted.
And then, were we, it looks like we were expecting a smaller PILT fund contribution, although we expected less last year and got more as well.
Yes, that's true. That was on last month's report, so I-
Oh, okay.
I didn't address that this time. Okay, adult P and P fund, 355, on page 107. They have received 54% of their revenue, so more than half. And last year, at this point, they had only received 23%. The difference there was, they had only received 1.2 million of their SB 1145 distribution. So that could have been simply a timing issue. You know, we received, just like I was mentioning with property taxes, I'm not exactly sure about that, but the difference was in receipt of the grant.
I, I get one trend in, with going through a lot of these departments. I think the state is just pushing the money out faster this year in a lot of these programs and departments. That's my impression.
Yeah. On the expense side, they're holding at about a third, which is consistent with the amount of time that's passed during the year. Here, they're 29%. On the road, CIP, which is on your next page, no real difference from prior year or anything to highlight here. They're managing right to their budget. And I'm going to skip forward to, there's a CIP, unless there's any questions on this specifically, I'm going to roll through that. Fund 610, this is solid waste. They, they're spent, both their revenue and their spending, so 38% of revenue and 23% of spending compared to budget is right on track with last year. And their finances are consistent with last month, so no changes here either. Okay, on to the fair fund, 615, we've been spending a lot of time. I know that Jeff Hines is pretty focused on this, and he gave a recent update on it. But just quickly, in terms of the budget, they, they're at 29% of their revenue, this is a good sign, 29% of their revenue they've received year-to-date. Last year at this time, it was 23%. So that's, that's a trend that's going in the right direction.
Well, yeah, but Greg, this is, again, was that one that included the inter-fund payment, which we didn't do at all last year. So that's $100,000 of it. So I think it's kind of-
There's $6,000 of it.
A hundred, yeah. It's kind of a-
The inter-fund payment, oh, the-
That's a big asterisk.
Yeah. That's a good, that is true. And on the spending side, they're at 29% of budget. Last year, they were at 33. One point, one thing I do want to point out here is this line item here, transfers in, room tax as needed. You'll see the projection is for $59,000. And this was what the budget committee and the board adopted in terms of TRT funds up to $250,000 to keep the fair whole for the year. So this number here will change month to month, as is required, up to $250,000 to balance the fund down here at the bottom to zero. So I just want to point that out as something to keep your eye on. And I'll bring that up in the, in future presentations as well. So right now, as it sits, we're using $59,367 of that up to $250,000 allocation. All right, on to Fund 616, this is the annual county fair. Since there isn't one, there's not a lot of changes here, but they're still continuing to watch, or adjust as we move forward to balance, balance the books there without the fair and moving into next year's fair. Sister report here is on the next page, and that's simply a copy of the calendar year budget. So it breaks it out by actual fair year. So as you can see, for fair year 2020, right now, we're projecting a loss of $29,105. Fair year 2019, ending balance, we had $3,285. So we're slightly above zero. Then on to Fund 617, capital reserve, no change in this fund this month. And the RV park, a couple of quick points. We brought in 55% of our budget in terms of revenue. Last year, it was 62%. So we're a little bit behind there. Most of that is in this top line, the RV park fees, less than 31 days. So we have a projected number here of $369,000 we think we're going to bring, bring in revenue, which is slightly less than our budget. But this time last year, we had brought in, we'd brought in $100,000 more in this projection. On the expense side, we're at 18% of budget. Last year was 20. And then, again, this fund has a transfer out to the RV reserves, this $279,000 here. Whatever's left over from the operation goes to reserves. So again, this number is going to change month to month to drive the bottom line fund balance to zero. And I'll show you this 279 on the next page. 279 leaves the operating fund for the RV park. And then on your next page, comes in here as a transfer in. So where you can really see the difference from year to year is last fiscal year, $502,000 came from the operating side. We had a budget this year of $621, but we look like that projection now is going to be $279,000. On to page, the next page, 118, Fund 670, this is our risk management fund. Our revenues are consistent with prior year, 38%. Our expenses are 26% of budget, which is down from last year's 32%. And this could just be simply a timing difference, but one of the differences in expenses between last year and this year is, you'll see this property damage number of 276074. Last year, that number was $587,000. And on to our health benefits funds, 675, this is our operations or health benefits fund. Sort of the big picture, we're projecting, at this point, a fund balance of $15.6 million. Last month, that was $15.1 million. So again, these numbers are going to change as we move forward. Our revenues are consistent compared to budget as last year, but our expenses, at least right now, are projected to be slightly down. And that's what's causing the fund balance projection to go up. And the very last page, which is 911, Fund 705 and 710, we are at 14% of our revenue collected. Last year, this was 5%. Again, as I've mentioned a few times, that's driven by these property tax receipts that occurred in October this year that didn't occur last year. Other than that, that's, their expenses are right on track, and everything else is looking good there. Any questions on the finance report for the month?
Greg, with the realignment of the property tax statements, where it's clear that if you pay early, you get your 3% discount, do you think that's why we definitely saw greater property tax revenue in October than we had in the past? Could there be a correlation, or was it just, you know?
There, well, there certainly could be. It could also be due to COVID. I know that there, we received a lot more deposits using our drive-through Dropbox that we just installed. We were going out three times a day and coming back with, you know, boxes full of property tax payments. So that was being used. We didn't see quite the activity upstairs at the tax windows as we had seen in the past. So I believe that people were paying sooner and through the Dropbox than in the past. And I also believe we sent the tax statements out slightly earlier than last year. So we're, I think those were the factors that caused us to receive these receipts a little bit sooner than last year.
I think that, I think those are good points. I think also people were, that could afford to do it, were trying to always keep ahead of their, because we've been so locked down, keep ahead of their bills, et cetera. And then the other thing is that originally, it sounded like with the increased deductions, you wouldn't be able to count your, your property taxes if you paid them in a given year. But actually, you do get a benefit. And I think, I learned that, so I think other people probably learned it too from their accountants or tax, tax people, that if you pay it all this year, you get a credit for it this year. That it's not like it used to be where you'd itemize deductions, but there's some other benefits. That might be also factors.
All I know is, I got two property tax bills, of which it was clearly identified in the letter that if you, it wasn't put in with your escrow account, the escrow account wasn't going to pay it. So, okay. Anyway, I learned that lesson. Thank you very much. Next year, they're, they're in together. So.
Okay. Thank you much.
No, thank you, Greg. Thank you for all this work. Happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And enjoy.
And I don't know if we're going to be able to, are we going to have a meeting next month late enough that we'll have this report, or do you think we'll, because we don't have any meetings scheduled at the end of the month, the next month?
Well, yeah, it's a tentative at this point. We don't have firm plans that, you mean over the Christmas holiday.
I just, I just want to say, in the four years I've been here, I think these reports are some of the best ways for the commissioners to keep on top of what's changing, what's going on, et cetera. And I think their, the system is, the information's really well-presented, and with the footnotes, the combination really has been a great, great tool, one of the best ones, and one of the things I look forward to every month, so we can kind of see where we are, and we learn all the, anything that's new or different, or, so thanks. Hope we can keep doing it.
Okay. Thank you much.
No, thank you, Greg. Okay, so we're at 20 to 12, and we do have another item on our agenda, which is right at 11:40. We are on time. Dave Doyle, would you like to bring this issue up?
Certainly, Commissioners. This is your work session. As you know, for some time, we've been looking to migrate the Deschutes County Code to a external platform. That'll relieve the IT department of a lot of headache that they have in maintaining that platform currently. Plus, it will allow for a much more robust platform that'll have search options, including active links back to the actual enacting ordinances that brought certain code provisions to be. That's a process that admin, CDD, IT, legal have been budgeting for, and that'll occur first quarter ideally of next year, 2021. In advance of that, though, we saw the financial benefit to, to move into the code and do some wholesale housekeeping amendments, because the price for submitting amendments, there, there's a dollar value associated with that. So the, the base source document that we provide to the outside vendor, we want it to be as current and updated as possible, so that we have fewer, especially fewer housekeeping amendments that could have and probably should have been done before migrating over. And so that's the packet that's in front of you. We started this a while ago, two years or more. So I know I've made copies of this packet and put it in your office a few times, and I apologize if you've gone through it more than once. I did try to provide you with a, wherever it is here, and I hope you have it here. It was a summary of the amendments. It was a page and a half at the beginning of your packet that just gave a quick synopsis of what the amendment was actually doing, or intended to do. And so this is set for a public hearing next Wednesday. I, whether anybody from the public will have any interest and appear, I'm not sure.
Thousands of people will be appearing, Dave.
Yeah, I, I put the over/under at two, maybe one, but we'll certainly see where that goes. But that's next Wednesday, public hearing. And so this was the opportunity, if you had some particular questions, or if you want anything clarified in advance of next Wednesday, I'm happy to do it. I could try to answer any questions you might have about any particular proposed amendments. These were all vetted with the various departments that have responsibility for certain areas of the code. So this wasn't legal, simply going in and saying, hey, it would make sense to change this to that, or. I reached out to all the departments and actually sent them the sections of code and said, hey, can you send me back red lines of any proposed housekeeping level amendments that you would like to see? And this is the end product of that. One final piece to it is, you'll notice, and this has been a longstanding desire of, of HR, and legal certainly agrees with them, and that is to pull Title III out of the code, which is basically our internal personnel rules, and not have that be a public-facing document as part of the county code, but instead to have it be a standalone personnel rule document, similar to a lot of our benefits documents that, that exist for employees, that while they're public documents, they're not necessarily put in a public-facing document such as your county code. So, and there are no proposed amendments to those, that Title III. It's just, as part of this, we're asking that we pull Title III out of the county code, incorporated as a standalone personnel rule document. And then any subsequent amendments to that will be, again, brought to the board in a public hearing process, but it'll be adopted by resolution and not ordinance. And so can move a little bit quicker for that, is probably the primary reason for that. So with that, I can try to answer any questions. I'm not sure how you'd like to handle this work session portion of this today. I know you've had these documents quite a long time. And again, I apologize if you've read them more than once.
So really, in preparing for next Wednesday, would really be taking a summary, and if we're interested, looking at what the changes are in the packet that you gave us. That's really what, and then if, we could ask you questions between meetings also, if we need to, yeah.
Yes, please. I would encourage that. And what you have is the red lines. So you know, it clearly shows what it is that would be changed if you, if you adopt these, these amendments. And so the process next week would be obviously, I could give a brief staff report, open the public hearing, receive any public comment, close the public hearing, and the board could then deliberate and decide what it is you want to do. I would come back a week or two later with ordinances to bring about whatever it is that you direct. So there'd be a little window of time at that point. But again, ideally, our goal was to try to get this done at the end of the 20, so that we could move forward with migrating over to that platform in, in 21.
And what you're talking about migrating to is the MUNI code, which will cost approximately $6,000?
Yes.
But you're saying that it's going to be an offset with time and resource capacity at the IT department then, because it's going to-
I think just the goodwill, it's-
The goodwill.
From IT is, is-
Yes.
It's grand. They, they do a great job of taking care of the code, but it, it's, it's not something that's really in their willhouse, or that they, you know, enjoy doing. And we just don't have, through the platform at IT, we don't have the ability to really have a sophisticated code. You go to most other public entities, their online codes, and they have active links, which are really helpful. Commissioner Henderson knows this, obviously, from his law, law practice. But boy, when you can click on a, an active link that takes you to the actual ordinance that enacted the code section, and maybe there was a change, and so you can see when it changed and how it changed. And now you can't really do that. The only way to do that is, you get a laundry list of all the various ordinances that are referenced. You got to go to a whole different database, which is difficult enough for staff to navigate into. It's very challenging for the public to navigate into it. And then you go through what is a bunch of maintained PDFs of the ordinances. And then you go through what is a bunch of maintained PDFs of the ordinances. And it's, it, it's just not the best way of doing this, and for such a, a, really a nominal amount of money. And then, as it turns out, my understanding is we might be migrating to MUNI code for part of our agenda management. I believe that's Sharon's presented, or talked to you folks about that. And if MUNI code is who that migration is to, that'll have interapplicability with this as well. So, for instance, if you're dealing with a land use case, and there are certain land use code provisions that are at issue, we can simply embed links right in there and wouldn't have to include necessarily the, the paper copy of the code unless it was requested. And the same thing for the public following along with the meeting portal. They'd be able to double-click on that link, and it would pull up the, that code section immediately. So hopefully, you know, this will all migrate together and, and help for a better product.
Well, your list, the page and a half, is actually 48 amendments, of which nine of them are related to Title III. Is that correct? HR, Personnel to Human Relations, are all the 3.04, all those?
Yes, th- those are not going to occur.
Right.
We put those out.
Right. That's what I was thinking.
When they do come forward, that's what they're hoping to do. And, and that'll be a process with Eric and Kathleen moving forward as a separate standalone document.
Okay. Great. So it sounds like we are ready, and I do have my original document, which you gave it to us October 16. So Tom, did you want to say something?
Oh, I just, I have a couple total changes. Do you want me to mention now, or just give them to you?
I'll track with you afterwards.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? We'll have our public hearing next week, on Wednesday, with, I believe, a couple other public hearings. So, all right. Thank you, Dave, very much.
You, Commissioners.
All right. Let's see. Do we have any other items we want to bring up at this moment in time?
Under our actual other items?
Yes.
Okay.
I could, we could move it up.
Yeah, a couple, yeah, that's right. So I have a couple. One, I was, I know we all joined the facilities review, project review committee initial meeting yesterday. I thought that was really terrific. It seems like a really great cross-section of people, and I hope we can use that really well. So that was something I just wanted to note, that's a, to review projects that, capital projects, and it's something the community will learn, hopefully, learn about some. But it's to advise future commissions on, and commissioners about, you know, different ideas for capital improvements. I believe there's a 1:30 press conference today. I don't know if we're going to try to watch that here. I, I would like to. I'd like to see. I've been, I got the, the more, the most recent framework, I think from Leah Horner, with what's going to be closed and when, and it just seems like that'd be worthwhile. It's hard, kind of a little bit hard to figure out where they're going with their planning.
Right.
Also, mention something brought to our attention by Commissioner Dare, that they're in the latest Volunteers in Medicine, wasn't it that? Newsletter, Jeanie, Dr. Jeanie Young did give credit to the county for their, for our help with getting her testing opportunity set up in our parking lot. And I thought that was great, that she took the time to, to do that. So those are just three things.
Yeah, I saw her over there. I was walking from here to downtown one day, and, but she had people she was working with, so I didn't stop to say hi and thank her, but she's over here in our parking lot.
And I want to thank Eric for coordinating that. Eric Rupp, thank you so much. Yeah, I think it's really wonderful when you get a call from someone that needs a COVID test, and you can share Jeanie's number. She is definitely out there. And really, it's been a blessing that she's been so worth, working so hard for our community. You know, I think her whole family's in medicine. So it's quite, it's a calling, and I thank her for helping us out. It took a, a bit longer than it should have, but we, we finally got it implemented, and thank you, Dr. Young.
So with the Zoom call just now, it was media, TV, radio station. No real questions, nothing really interactive. Dr. George did these same slides. The mayor of Bend, and the mayor of Redmond spoke about how the holidays are going to be a little different. And basically, all advocated for people just to slow down, pay attention, please wear a mask. You know, just some of the basics. I did advocate for deschutes.org/safeholidays is our website that talks about mental and physical health throughout this, suggested items. So it was really just kind of a one-way street today, but the plan, if it, if it is valuable to the community, is to do that weekly for a little while.
And there were some differences. One of the slides you had was on the Bend wastewater treatment plant, which originally was like very, very low, 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 and now it's gone up to very strong. So that was a slide that was not in our packet. So there are, there's some serious, there are some differences. That was one I did notice.
Yep. Dr. Con, we added those slides and mentioned it. As I say, there was really, there was no questions, but it was information that was shared with the community, yes.
Well, just remember, we had the testing, what, Oregon State did the testing, what, 613 people a couple of months ago? And they actually, at that point in time, found zero positives, which I know they were shocked that it was zero then. So we really need to go back to zero. So that would be a, a great direction.
Any idea how many observers, or was it a?
It was, it was kind of a press conference available for press, so there, yeah, there was a half a dozen media people. I mean, as I say, the, kind of the regulars. And it'll be available on the, maybe the City of Redmond's website or something, too.
So should we actually adjourn at this moment and then come back? We have, what, an executive session?
Yes.
We have an executive, and then if we could have, come back at 1:00, go to our executive, and then we could do our press conference, hopefully at 1:30 here? Could that, do you think that would be a good timeline? Right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I was going to ask, though, is, is the, or did the update on the MOU and things for Veterans Village?
That is the executive session.
It is.
So is, is that document done, or is it in my box?
I don't know that...
I don't like getting them at a meeting. They're, they're very complicated legal documents. I want to compare them to last week's legal document, and...
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe that Christie has a revised document for you. I think it's a verbal update, similar, because she had a meeting with Vets Village representatives yesterday, similar to your update on Monday.
That really wasn't what our plan was, so. Our plan was to have a new document. We gave 20 changes last time, or it seemed like. So we're not, it's a week later. I, okay, well.
Okay.
Well, and, yeah, we can talk about it.
I'm just trying to get it done, and I, you know, I'm calling Eric on, he's on vacation and somewhere else. And so I guess we'll bring it up at 1:00.
You also, Commissioners, had asked for another item, other, item under other items to discuss the business assistance, so we can, we can fit that in between 1:00 and 1:30. We could come back following the press conference to do that as well.
Okay.
Yeah. That'd be great.
And I want to note that someone, a new acquaintance of mine, who is here in Deschutes County, just sent me pictures, and he made the difference for a veteran's life yesterday. So I was really, it's really good to see that people are reaching out in our community. And hopefully, our Veterans Village will be into existence sooner than later. So thank you. We will see you again at 1:00. Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, let's reconvene our afternoon meeting for the Board of County Commissioners, November 25th, 2020. And we do actually need to go into executive session at this time. Notified from all these different comments for your three main points that you needed to clarify. Any other questions? No. You're good?
Good, thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. Yeah, we want to get this done. Thank goodness the weather's warmed up a touch. But, you know, it's, more housing that we can get for people, and especially veterans, into something warmer would be lovely. So, sir, we don't have another executive session, do we?
Yeah, Tom had something.
How long I sent, I thought we were talking about deferring that.
Okay, all right. Well, we can talk about that, because we have, we have 20 minutes before the governor's press conference.
Well, we also have the business, emergency business grants program to discuss.
Okay. So is that an executive?
No.
No, okay. Can we do the grants then first? Okay.
He came back, so he's ready to walk you through it.
He's down here.
Okay, all right. So Stephanie, we're going to go back to other business now?
No.
The, we need to discuss the Deschutes County Emergency Business Grants Program with the $2.43 million from the state.
And I could share with you, the, the grant agreement from the state came out over lunch hour.
Great.
James Woods and myself have started reviewing it. I don't know, Greg might have been reviewing it as well.
So this says 2.43, but then this report from Leah Horner said 2.234.
It should be 2.234. You're correct.
Okay. Okay, so 2.234. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I noticed it. Now my change, I figured it, what it was going to be.
Okay, darn it. I like...
I know.
I like your number better than my number in pink. So Dave?
Oh, I'll talk to COIC tomorrow. So this is Dave Givens, County Internal Auditor. So I spent some time with COIC, talking about some of the options and some of the approaches to the program. And so I kind of came together with this. Some of it's the eligibility criteria you see from the state. And again, I haven't seen the application, so I'll have to see that soon, see if there makes any changes. But we try to stay within that, stay as open as possible. So there's some areas we could close it down a little bit more in terms of, we want to cap out the number of employees, we want to cap it out to certain businesses of certain size, like certain revenue levels. We put criteria in for the types of businesses, which is kind of what we talked about in the last board meeting. I think it's in the Urban Retail, 501(c)(3), all the hospitality stuff, child care. My thought is, is to the extent that they fall in one of those categories, they'll get a little bit more points, more, more, higher preference of funding. The other thing we talked quite a bit about was the application processes. We, we, they had trouble, and they've seen the, the applications that open and close because they fill up, anticipated, fill up really quickly. And in order to, to make sure the money goes in the right places, we really would like to hold it open for at least two or three days. It puts a little more pressure on development criteria, but it also makes it a little fairer, we think.
Yeah. I know people that put into that Business Oregon one that didn't get a, you know, they didn't even get looked at. And it's like, who's ready to do it in the, you know?
And they applied at 3:05 on last Thursday afternoon at 3:00.
Part of it also was to keep open, maybe at least touch one of the weekend days, so that people who maybe work during the week and don't have time to get to it have an opportunity on the weekend day to get their application in. So again, I think we're trying to be thoughtful about the process, thinking about some of the, the other types of people that will want to apply to this grant. The funding ranges, we kind of, I started with the funding levels we had in the last grant and expanded it a little bit to give a range in case the criteria were strong, or in case the committee decided they wanted to fund at a higher level. And I think, you know, given the amount of money we have, just depends on how much we can, that kind of gives us some elasticity in the funding.
Which is important.
I think that's kind of important, because it gives us, you know, if we do a lot in the higher level, grant 25 employees, the restrictions, we might restrict those down to very specific cases. But we might have, like, I think the last time we did this, the 0 to 5 group had, was about 78% of our, of our applicants. But we had a lot of small, small applicants, and that's what we were advertising for. This one's a little more broad, a little more flexible.
So one thought, maybe, just looking at these numbers, anticipated funding ranges, is maybe just set 5,000 as the minimum for everything except 0 to 5 employees. So 2,500, and then 5,000 for all the other ones after that. My thought is, there has been opportunities, some businesses have been able to qualify for different things, and there could be a larger business where a $5,000 grant is the right thing, and then we don't want to put ourselves in a $1,250 or $15,000 category if, you know, just to open up flexibility. So it's lowering the...
Especially if there's a checklist to say, did you get PPE funded?
Yeah, yeah, all that. That's exactly my thought.
Guys, I've been talking to people, okay, this one woman, 60 employees, they average $20,000 a night with their restaurant, and, okay...
Is she a state representative?
No, no, it's not her. No, she got, that state representative got $434,000 in PPNE, uh, PPNE, P, from, yeah, her, from her restaurants. But no, this is somebody else. And, you know, putting it down at 5,000, that is, that's like, that's a drop in the bucket for anybody at that level. That doesn't, I mean, oh my God, they just as well kiss it all goodbye. It's, it's not enough.
I wasn't talking about lowering the top number. I was just talking about lowering the bottom number.
Or increase...
I thought you were going to increase it. It says here 2,500 to 7,500.
Starting at 6 to 10, they all are at 5,000.
I'm referring to, so if greater than 25 employees, the lower number at $5,000. And just to fish for those, a subset of companies that maybe kind of had it working, but it didn't, and they qualify, but we don't need to commit to 15,000 just because, it was just an idea.
Well, I think that's what we need to do, is throw out some ideas. Because I'll, another, so another question I have, David, if, when in this number of employees, I was talking to a restaurant owner last night, when things were full, they own two restaurants. When they are full, they have 150 employees. Right now, they're carrying 10, and they basically are carrying them to keep those people busy as almost a gesture. It's not because with this takeout. So are you a 10-employee company or 150-employee company?
Yep.
And I bet that's, throughout the whole industry, that's true. I mean...
And I wouldn't mind raising the high number either.
What's that?
I wouldn't mind raising the high.
I wouldn't either.
But their, all their other expenses, even you're saying if they were 150 employee, okay, so they've gone down to 10 employees that they're really trying to carry through this. But all their other expenses have not diminished. You know, they could cut back on their employees to 10% or whatever, but their, their mortgage, their rent payment, if they have 150 employees, they probably have a lot of square footage.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I agree.
That's why I'm bringing it up, is that they're not, shouldn't be rated as a 10-employee company if they've got two full restaurants that they pay mortgage or rent on.
Yeah.
You know, all that space, and all the electricity, and all the CAM charges, et cetera. So do you, how did they do that in the past in terms of the number of employees, quote unquote? How did they decide how many employees somebody had?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly. I think the...
For their, their financial statements.
They're probably putting in what they, they...
No, I'm not asking.
To your point about expenses of the organization, we before used to have a thing in here about fixed costs or percentage of, of amount of fixed costs. The COIC indicated that was really problematic in the application before. It, it kind of increased the threshold, but, so I kind of took that up because I was kind of looking for a simpler process, and then based on more employees. But you're, you've got a good observation there in terms of employees. You know, was it the pre, pre's number of employees? Is it the current number of employees? Is it...
Yeah, maybe, actually, it might be three. What were your number of employees on March 1st? What are your number of employees October 1st, when things were kind of back to somewhat normal? I mean, not normal, but COVID reduced normal. And then now, when they're maybe completely, no, but no employees, or, or right before the shutdown or something. I mean, maybe there should be a, so when somebody reading it can see the profile... so when somebody reading it can see the profile of the company.
Right.
Something like that might be a way, I'm just bringing it up as a, something that occurred to me talking to this person.
I don't know if it shows real well here, I'm trying to see, but one of the criteria might, oh, explanatory statements from businesses on why they need funds, having kind of an open-ended, you know, maybe 50 words or less, you know, why do you need this money?
Well, that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah. Put it all in there.
A little bit of, a little bit of story along with that, that, you know, we anticipate at least, you know, 300 applications, maybe more. It creates a little effort, but it's, I think, it helps tell a story.
Yeah.
Definitely, a story is important.
Like 50 words is kind of let, small, maybe 100 words or something, but.
But it's just, it's just like a utility bill, I was told by one of my favorite restaurants that their electric bill the month of March was 900, it was almost $1,000. So, you know, it's, I really think we need to give first priority to those that have been shut down, the restaurants, the gyms, the bars, that have like, okay, takeout really doesn't cut anything, I mean, so they're keeping 10 out of 150 of their employees on payroll.
Yeah, it does nothing to actually make, you know, it just keeps the people working, probably cost the owner some money to do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's their families, it's, it's like, you know, it's, it's a, it's not just an employee, it's a family that you have, and a lot of these people are month to month. And then the other thing to consider is that the employment system, trying to get your unemployment is never very easy here. I'm still trying to help some people that haven't gotten their employment from months ago, you know, how to, how to get that.
So one of the ones on you, you got a type of business including childcare. It seems like we've given quite a bit of money throughout ourselves and the city and the chambers childcare. I just wonder if there's something new about childcare now that's changed because of these new orders? Because I, I kind of felt like this money was for people really impacted by these new orders, but not that I'm, I mean, we've been real supportive of childcare, but I just wonder what that factor would be.
I threw that in, in there, and again, it's probably because I saw the prior history that we have an emphasis in there, also because of the freeze. So the freeze kind of adds a little more dimension to the childcare requirement.
Are they, they're not shut down though, are they, they're?
I'm not aware that they are, but.
But you're thinking that maybe people, they have more demand now, or, I don't know what they're doing.
No, well.
Less demand because parents are at home?
Uh, it was just, you know, it was a thought, so.
But then there's the healthcare workers that can't find childcare, so, you know, it's, it's all sides. It's an issue.
Well, the particular like items, you know, the top two, and I don't know about how much of the urban retail, I guess, maybe not, all urban retail's not the same, I mean, I was on the west side at lunchtime, and, you know, some stores are really busy and some stores not busy at all.
Don't forget, this is shop local, shop small weekend, so please, everyone, please, 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 it's been a really bad year, and please shops, shop local.
So I might propose removing urban retail, 501(c)(3) and childcare, and not that they're excluded, but they're other small businesses, just to keep the words less here. And I guess, Dave, so, and I'm not on the receiving end of hundreds of applications, I mean, we are as an entity, but I haven't been reading them. This is trying to put a little bit more direction about who's, who are kind of asking to come, right?
Appreciate it, yes.
Did we get a lot of applications from urban retail in the prior rounds with COIC, do you know, or?
I don't know specifically on that, off the top of my head. It was a rather big mix, you know, services and small businesses, and then there's been several different rounds, and I just pulled some, some statistics from one of the rounds so I could kind of get a flavor.
Because my first impression when this happened was that all the retail that basically sells to tourists or people traveling here would be hurt with this whole thing, but then as we got more travel and tourism here, through the summer, I wondered, I heard, I've talked to several stores that actually did pretty well during the summer, but I don't know now if that's true or not, if, I mean, this whole thing of staying at home and feels like the first generation, the kind of the pre-opening, the pre-reopening period, so. So you're thinking taking them out just because they can come in under small businesses, rather than trying to identify them as a priority item?
Yeah, none, I mean, so, and the reason why I would go there is because gyms and fitness centers, indoor recreation activities, outdoor, oh, well, indoor pool sports facilities, activities, and I guess we don't call bars out specifically, but the things that were very much in the governor's orders are the things that, you know, I advocate for.
Be impacted.
Yeah.
They're in the hospitality industry.
Yeah.
You're saying when there would be a, a criteria ranking submissions, maybe they would get a higher, higher priority, like more points or more weighting on their points or something. I, I like that idea, I like that idea better than.
Because a, a small business can make a case, and just like you're saying, some businesses are, you're not going to hear from because, oh, you know, this kind of helped us. Other businesses are like, man, we walked away, closed the doors, nobody ever came and asked for our whatever, product or service. Some businesses have really gotten quiet, but that'll be for the applicants to make a case.
I have talked to a gym owner and an indoor recreation facility, both of them, you know, they're, they just feel completely up against it.
Yeah, so we want to focus on, on those kind of folks.
Yeah, I think, I think the idea is that if we grade, you know, with these criteria, we grade them, give them some point values, and then there's going to be some nice bands that maybe we can.
Yep.
More to, you know, the ones that are the highest level needs, based on, you know, the direction you guys give, so, again, so. And I also did, I did include, in the last, last time we did a round with county money, we did have a commissioner involved, so I mean, I did, I did leave that in there again, in terms of an expectation that maybe, you know, we have some representation on the committees. You know, before, I suspect we'll stand up similar type committees, again, COIC kind of drove the process, but, you know, we had chambers and we had citizens on those kind of committees.
Maybe we could, if there's different committees, maybe we could each, I think it's important for all of us, maybe each of us could be on a different committee.
And that's true, or you could.
If you want, if we want.
Not to all of them, if you want.
Yeah.
That's fine, too. Just depends on what you guys want, how you want to spread yourself.
I'd like to be involved, I, I think this is an important round here.
Yeah, I would like to be involved, too, so the vision is to, yeah, be involved and be, help to score criteria. You know, and my thought is, let's not be a slowing effect on it, you know, as a board of commissioners, we got to be careful, because if we have to wait for us to re-meet as a board and vote on something, that'd be bad.
This is really just a teeny little Band-Aid, honestly and truly, remember, they had 4.5 just from the city of Bend alone, which they gave 1.25. I mean, yeah, this is a teeny Band-Aid, this is, you know, it needs to get out to our business community as fast as we possibly can. So these are all the rules they're sending to us?
We have not received, well, maybe we've received some rules, I, I haven't seen the new rules, this includes the press release rules.
This is what he wrote up, this is what, this is what you wrote up, right?
I'll forward that to you, just came in over lunch hour.
That's what I said, or wait, somebody else thought it was going to come in at 5, right? So it came in at noon, so.
Well, it's 1:30.
So for guidance, do you like the idea of lowering that number for the higher?
I'm good with that.
It's just, just in case there's a business.
The range.
Because it might make you go a little farther. So from 11 to 15 up to 20 plus 25, $5,000 minimum.
All of those are at 5.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
I think that's a, that's a drop in the bucket.
Oh, yeah, it is, I'm just saying.
It's all a drop in the bucket, but once you get past that point, what, what else can we do?
Well, and this is hopefully going to stabilize the economy, be able to pay your utilities mortgage overhead for a couple, you know, a month or whatever it is. Federal government might do something, a vaccine might come on, and we don't know what three months is going to look like, so it's giving people confidence right now.
I think they would like dollars right now, confidence, I'm not quite sure.
Well, you're going to get the federal government to give us a few trillion more and we'll solve it all again.
So we should probably be advocating for a vibrant economy, because.
I think we should be advocating that the vaccinations get shipped out like they're planning to, and if 40 million vaccinations can get out by.
Are we going to watch that show, or watch the governor at 1:30?
She's never on right on time.
What about striking urban retail, 501(c)(3) and childcare, is that supported?
Well, 501(c)(3) was.
Because it's included already.
No, I, I think we should leave it there, just in case there's a charity that hasn't been able to get any funding, you know, the money we give out the, is really for the need right now, I mean, I looked at it, I had 14 charities that I personally had funded a year ago, 14 of them, they're all, they're sitting on my desk, and I'm going like, oh my gosh, okay, not in my backyard, Assistance League, they had major fundraisers, I mean, there's a, where, where are those people going to get the funding to do what they?
I wasn't trying to exclude them, I was just.
So a little bit, David, about your timeline, are you thinking this would start like next Monday, maybe, or what's your plan?
I think, you know, there will be need to be a marketing plan, probably a day or two, three days to kind of get the notice out, and then three days, two, three days to keep it open. I'm guessing if we can get the money on Monday, or even get things started, get the application going, get our agreement with COIC going, I think, you know, maybe we can get things opened and started next week, maybe, so we could do maybe a Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Application time, okay, good.
That'd be my hope.
Dave, I think that's really quite noble and lovely to keep it open for three days, you know, and then have our waiting system, because in the past, if, you know, if you didn't get on at 3:00, 3 o'clock, you weren't in the picture, so I think it, you know.
Third, fourth, and fifth of December.
COIC struggled a little bit with getting applications that were just to get the foot in the door, and then they followed up with, had to follow up with a lot of bad information later, so I think this will help cure that, too, a little bit.
Good.
So if you really are truthful, and applications that are incomplete or non-responsive will be eliminated, so what if they just are missing one little thing? Is it like when we apply a grant to the federal government and we're?
Can be eliminated, I, you know, I'm, I.
Yeah.
We'll work with people to the extent we can.
COIC worked with a lot of people that went back and said, we need this, and that was a big part of the whole committee thing, was going back to all these people and say, we don't have this, we need this, et cetera.
So we try to slim down the request so that it will be a little bit easier.
And it's excellent that you're doing it in Spanish also, I think that's really important.
Please, the governor's speaking.
Okay, so she's started. So Stephanie, can we?
When COVID-19 first emerged in Oregon, in the spring, much was unknown about the virus. We weren't sure if we had enough PPE to protect our doctors and nurses, and we didn't fully understand.
Is it?
Well, there's some changes from what we had seen in the draft, yeah.
58% of the counties in Oregon are in extreme, so 21 out of 36. There's five green counties, though, that's really where we want to be, and today was our worst number ever, we were 75, so, you know, hey, guys, please follow the guidelines tomorrow, I, you know, 75 was.
But just to what she announced today is not in one form yet to us, is that right? I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at news, kind of rage on Oregon Live.
Leave us sent a note that said, new metrics here.
Oh.
I, I got.
And it shows that we're on the extreme category, and then it shows the metrics.
Okay, good.
Cork is actually, yeah, second highest, fortunately, for them, so I hope that means they can keep their schools open.
So if we're going to finish the emergency business grants program, I had a couple of follow-ups for David, is that our next step?
Sure.
So, David, I guess one of the, so you kind of gave us a potential timeline of it'd be after the holidays, I mean, sometime next week is when the, the three days will open, it sounds like, is your, is your thinking, so will you let us know if that changes, or when you know that?
While you guys were, were listening, I talked to, or I emailed COIC to see if that timeline works. I also reviewed the criteria from the con, from the agreement, and there's some nuances to it, I'll have to go through a little closer, but there's just a couple little extra criteria, I think, to, to watch for, but all in all, not too bad, so.
I wonder if with the holidays coming up for four days, if you get something or working on it, want input for us, maybe you can send it out to us and we can get back to you before Monday or by Monday.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see it changing a lot from here, but I will make those changes you guys suggested, and then I will work on the contract with, with COIC. I think they're, they're up and running, but I don't know how long it will take them to program their system to do the application, so that's, that's something I don't know. So again, I think optimistically, I'm optimistic that we can start this process next week.
Okay. Then one of the questions I had on the eligibility, it says it can demonstrate a one-month decline in sales of 25% or more incurred by the COVID-19 panic between March 20, March 1st, 2020 and November 30th. It seems kind of weird, there's just a one-month decline in sales, it seems like, you know, businesses vary so much, period, you know, the one month, I mean, that's, I don't know, that doesn't necessarily seem very full measurement of anything. Not that I'm trying to exclude people, but just seems like there's ups and downs for all sorts of reasons, but.
I think COIC has had trouble getting documentation through the past, you know, PML statements, bank statements.
Yeah.
You approve, you know, approve something to us, give us something, it gives us an indication. The other, the other thing that we talked about a little bit, and I think I'll put it in as an added criteria, is that if they have more recent data on the PML, that's a better, better viewpoint for us.
Yeah.
So again, I think more recent is better, you go back to March and April, they probably already told us those numbers.
Yeah, maybe, that's a good point, maybe it's declines in, you know, October, you know, September, October, November of this year, or whatever, compared to last year, as opposed, because we're, this money was specifically given out because of these changes to standards, really, that was what the governor said, so.
Yeah, but the state's the one that had to put that, that one-month thing in that timeframe.
Oh, did they, okay.
That's a little bit of a.
Okay.
We have to kind of keep that in there, and maybe add something to say, if you could improve that by being more current, that'd be great.
So Dave, the last other month is the 30th Monday, so for someone, if we can come up with our guidelines for the applications and have them apply by Thursday, sometimes it's hard to get your bank statement that fast, I mean, I don't know, you know, for people to, you know. So that's, that's kind of another little nuance, because we are talking about the last two months through December 2nd, of, you know, less income. But I'm sure that any restaurant that had to go to lockdown a week ago is going to show definitely their revenue for the month of November is going to be significantly altered.
Again, I, I think we use the best information we have, if somebody's choosing to pick November, that's, that's a kind of tough one, because it is what you said.
Right, there's a timing issue there. But, you know, still, when you're used, it's just like the restaurant I talked about the other day, when they had $1,100 gross revenue, when they were used to 16,000 during the week, yeah, it doesn't take many days of that, when you can see that they've significantly had a revenue even opened with, to go, so.
Just slides out further, I would think, you know, instead of a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, be a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday kind of a thing, or?
Right.
So again, we'll, we'll try to, try to follow within that kind of three-day thing, and I'd like to, you know, of course, you know, you want to get that money out sooner than later, so. Even with the due diligence that we have to do and the process, it's going to take us probably, with a committee, probably, you know, three or four working days to probably work, work on. So you're probably adding to, you know, first week, second week.
Well, the good news is, though, we can probably make the decisions and immediately get the funds out to people, and it's going to be before Christmas. So that is, you know, really the good news, like, at least they know they're going to, they're going to get a check, it might not be as much as they need, but at least it's going to be something to help, so they don't turn off their power, right? It's like, are utilities put into a special category now because of COVID? Are businesses given a break there? I don't know, I know that there is a utility person on my Edco, sister's Edco call, yeah, I don't know if they've given businesses.
I don't know if they are or not, I haven't heard, I haven't really heard that they were.
But it is winter, and utility bills, tents can, they can go up 60. But it is winter and utility bills tend, can, they can go up significantly in winter, so. And if you're not really open, it's a problem. All right, so I think that sounds, don't you think we've got some great feedback? Thank you so much for, Dave, being part of that. I'm so glad you were before and, you know, we, and just know businesses, just be sure and be ready, pull your documents together. And we are giving you three days in order to apply. I think that's incredibly important. So if you don't get it done the first day, don't worry. We're not shutting it off in five minutes. We're going to keep it open for three days. We will wait it, but we will be as very fair as we possibly can. And we may have, we may have some more money to put over, just a teeny bit more. But, you know, if we have any more carers funding that Greg comes up with. Because we're going to make that decision maybe, what, didn't he say Monday or something?
What were we talking Monday?
Mm-hmm, yes, Monday. Okay, all right. Is there any other business today?
I'm as another executive session.
You're ready?
Solid waste.
Um, you know what? I'm going to go upstairs. I have a meeting. I read the memo on it, but I have, Melissa, is it a five-minute executive or is it more?
It's all up to you, it depends on-
I would, I would like to go upstairs for my next meeting because it's, it's with Annette to see if there's anything insightful that she can help me with.
Can we continue then? Tony can take over and we can just continue and then you can check in with us, or?
Sure.
Okay.
We're going back into executive.
This will be- Yeah, this is general session. We'll conclude during the meeting for today. Thank you.